Good evening, buenas noches. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Watsonville Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, January 21st, 2014. Roll call of commissioners.
Here.
Dana?
Here.
Gomez-Croncheras? Gonzalez?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Sarmiento?
Castillo?
Here.
Did Mireya call, or?
No, she did not.
Maybe she'll come in later or something, so, okay. A pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Dana.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The republic of which stands. For God.
Thank you. Feliz año, happy new year to commissioners, staff, and the audience. Point, item 3.0, petitions and oral communications. This is a time set aside for members of the general public to address the planning commission on any item that is not on the agenda. So if some of you want to come up to talk about anything that is not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. Just step up, state your name. We have translations, so if you want to do it in Spanish, we can translate to English. Or English, and we can translate to Spanish.
All right, so, state my name.
Just your name, and you've got three minutes.
All right, I'm Rita Uribe, and I'm a first grade bilingual teacher at Anzoldo School. And I am here representing the staff, because we as a united staff are unanimously against the idea of the 90-foot cell tower going in to the Frannich Park. I know it's not in the agenda, but even so, I wanted to bring it up for future references, that we use that park as an extension of our school. And I know we're not supposed to mention the health effects, but it's just dangerous, besides the health effects, to have that big tower there. So basically, that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And for clarification, either Keith or Susie, the Anzoldo Frannich Park cell tower is not on the agenda, was it?
There hasn't been a formal withdrawal, but they are considering other alternative locations at this stage for that site.
So has it been, what is the word I'm trying to look?
A withdrawal, there has not been a.
Not withdrawal, but continuation?
They have not requested to agendize the meeting, so they're looking at alternatives other than that current location.
But is the city covered with that? I mean, because.
Yes, we're fine. It's at the request of AT&amp;T at this stage. They've requested that we had potentially scheduled it for this meeting, and they requested it to be off of this meeting, to give them some more time to decide if they're going to move forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, this is Jose Humberto Camacho, also living at Vista Montaña Community. It's a beautiful park. We believe it's not good business for our community. A lot of, you know, as a family, we are used to go and enjoy the park. We also have the school on one side, and also, you know, the kids can enjoy playing baseball. So it's a fantastic park, so we believe there must be another location for, you know, a company to continue with their business. We don't oppose their business, but we oppose them to having this huge tall tower, you know, in our beautiful park. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Carmen Lua, and I also live on, I live on Roble, and I'm also against the tower park. We have a beautiful park. I have two grandkids, also that live in another house, and I'm very, very concerned about the safety. And also, I hear that they might have, our house is my, the pricing might go down, so, like I said, another concerned citizen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Veronica Melgosa, and I'm also here to express my concern about the cell tower. I also live in the community. My children go to school at Anzoldo, and we use the park often. And I'm just here to let you guys know that we are against it, because like I said, I'm also the president for the site in school council at Anzoldo, and parents are also concerned about it too, and they just don't think that that's a good idea. And especially if we already have other providers who have other coverage in our area. So it's just not fair to have another provider come just to make business and expose our children to all this radiation and all the things that happen. And there's riches about it. It's not that we're just saying it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Yolanda Melgosa, and I want to thank Commissioner Castillo and Commissioner Corley for going to our meeting that we had with AT&amp;T in November. When we came, you guys requested AT&amp;T to have a meeting with us as residents, to give us information of why they want to put the cellphone tower there. And as you saw, the meeting was a disaster. AT&amp;T was not ready for, to answer any questions. They refused to give us a presentation. They had their own agenda items that they wanted to cover, and nothing got covered. They never talked to us, they never addressed us as a public and a community. So I was really concerned about that, because I was thinking, if this is before they come in, they're treating us like this, imagine what they're going to do once they're in. So as a city, we really need to be really careful about the treatment we're getting before, because after it's going to get worse. And also, I'm really concerned about property values, and how close is to a school in our park? And I would like for you, when you make a decision, if this comes up again to you, that you guys let us know and send us the legal hearing notices that we are supposed to receive as residents. And also, that when you make a decision, you think about the future of Watsonville, and the parks, and the baseball fields that we have there, and what's going to happen to us as a community when we let a company like AT&amp;T to run our city. I mean, the city belongs to us, we pay taxes, and if you just let them come and run our city, think about what's going to happen in the future. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Imelda Hernandez, and I have my children who go to Anzoldo as well. I, my children go to that school, but I live in the Freedom Boulevard area, and I know they were looking at that site to get another cellphone tower there. And I know there's no parks, but there is homes, there is children. I know we're not supposed to talk about the health issues, and I think it's more likely for them to get a tower there, because we don't have a beautiful park like Anzoldo, which I also object to having it there, because of my children who attend, and they're there for eight hours a day for five days of the week. And we are the city, and last Wednesday, we had a meeting at the Portuguese Hall. They were citizens concerned. AT&amp;T was saying that they had done a survey to their clients, saying who wanted a coverage for cellphone, for better service. And they said that according to all the survey or the questions that they had received, a lot of people wanted better coverage, but they were not being very honest when they said that the cost of getting good coverage meant a cellphone tower. So, and they only sent the notice to people residing 500 feet from the location that was going to be placed. But if we are going to benefit for the service, don't you think they should be fair in letting everybody know who's going to be getting the service? And I think that would be more fair and unbiased, but giving the information properly to everybody, since the city is going to be affected, and not just the people who are 500 feet away from the tower. So both locations that are, they are planning to build, I against, because I lived in Freedom, but my kids are being watched, my mom who lives on Ice Lake, and attend Anzoldo. So I object on both sides, and I wish that you guys really consider, because at the end of the day, you guys are representing us, the city, and you guys are there because of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Oral communications from people, general public, on any item that is not on the agenda, just state your name.
I'd like to greet this planning commission. My name is Patrick Orozco, I'm tribal chairman of Pajaro Valley, Alona Indian Council, and I wasn't really going to come up here and speak till I heard them speak about cell towers. And I get letters from these self-power, power people all the time, you know, asking me, are there any, they're concerned, are there any Indian cultural sites in the area? And, well, I remember Anzoldo, a letter from, talking about Anzoldo Park, you know. I didn't respond, because there is a site not far, pretty, quite a ways from the Anzoldo Park, you know, and I can't reveal where it's at, you know, but it's there to record it site, you know. But now that I hear the people's concerns, you know, I said, well, this is not only concerning the Indian cultural sites, it's concerning what the people, the people are worried about, you know, and I support the people, you know, that I hear their concerns, and they should be heard, and something should be done about it. I really come for another item, which I'll be speaking on later on. I got my ticket here. Thank you.
Thank you. This is oral communications from the general public, on any item that is not on the agenda. Anyone else wants to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? I'd like to close oral communications from the general public, and bring it up to the planning commission. I'll let the record show that Mireya is here.
Thank you, apologies for being late. Family car sharing complications.
Commissioner Sarmiento, any comments?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to announce that tomorrow afternoon at 5:00, right in the conference room next door here to us, there will be a community prevention partners meeting. It is to facilitate a discussion, a town hall meeting, to talk about alcohol, the alcohol impact on the businesses, the community, and the youth. And I would like to invite everyone to attend tomorrow, Wednesday, the 22nd, at 5:00.
Thank you.
Nothing at this time.
Two quick things I just would like to say. Number one, I would like to say to the people of the 7th district, which is my district, that I feel the same way about the cell tower over at the Frannich Park. It's about the ugliest fake tree I've ever seen in my life, and I wouldn't put that in a dog show. So unless the design changes, unless it goes someplace else, I'm a no vote. And it's not for health reasons, it's simply because that is the ugliest tree I have ever seen. And I just want to congratulate the three groups that went out and got almost 11,000 petitions out there. So to the folks that went out, door to door, looking for those three petitions, one was the naming, and the mayor, and the vacancy, congratulations to those folks. It was a lot of hard work for them, and they probably knocked on your door a few times, so good luck to them and their vote up ahead. And that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Corley?
I just have a couple of things here to also. First of all, I went to both of the meetings with AT&amp;T, and I agree with the audience. The first one was a total waste of time. They were so unorganized, it was unreal, that you didn't even have an interpreter. They were just there to have someone come up and talk into them, and that was just a total waste of time. The second one, they were a little bit better organized, but I think they have a long ways to go, and I think on our end as planning commissioners, that we need to extend the coverage, instead of 500 feet, maybe we look at, you know, 1,000 or 2,000 feet, getting more residents involved in this. And I don't know how we could do that, Keith?
At this stage, it's written into the muni code, that's the 500 foot is above and beyond what the standard public noticing requirement is of 300 feet, so it's already been identified. We would have to have the council make a modification. There's a significant cost in regards to 1,000 or 2,000 feet to notice everybody involved, so that would be a council decision.
So we'd have to, the people in the audience would have to take it to the city council or the planning commission?
The city council would have to actually take it up and modify the ordinance, because that, that.
How would we get that done?
Make a request to the city council, and see if they would entertain that.
That would be the mayor that takes that up?
Yeah, it could be the mayor. The mayor would have to put it on the agenda for council discussion.
Thank you. I just have one, one thing to mention to the commissioners. I received in the mail from the League of California Cities, I don't know if the other commissioners got this, 2014 Planning Commissioners Academy. It's going to be in San Francisco, Wednesday, March 26th to Friday, March 28th. Registration, it's going to be at the Marriott San Francisco. This is put on by the League of Cities. It's a Planning Commissioners Academy, and I wanted to mention this, unfortunately, they charge for this, registration is $525 for their full conference. But if you go one day, it's only $275. I'm thinking if some of you are interested, we could go one day, drive in, carpool, stay one day, it's Wednesday through Friday, and then come back. The issue is, who would pay the $275 for one day? I know that the city council has very few, if any, monies for conferences, or it's very, 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 very limited.
Right. We would have to look into it, but for a single day, we could probably cover it, but I would have to check in regards to our budget. Since it's local, not doing overnight, you know, I think that there's significant potential to look at it. So, you know, I'll get back to you at the next meeting.
Is there any interest? I mean, I would be interested in going.
I would be interested.
$75 for all of us, then?
No, for one person.
No, it would be per person.
Per person, for one day. And we'd have, we would have to. The League of California Citizens, it's a nonprofit, I believe, so. Anyway, general sessions, planning commissioners, roles and responsibilities, how to run a meeting, planning tools, using modern technology.
Excuse me.
Collective governance. I'm still talking, so just hang on, please.
Okay. Is it still oral communication?
No, it's, we're finished with, we're moved on.
I would like to speak, because I was locked out.
Okay, well, sit down, and I'll get to you in a minute. How to make the league work for your city, and legislative SEQA basics, city finance update, congratulations on your appointment to the planning commissioner, planning commission now get working, a session on the environment, joint commissioner, city council meetings, the future of public engagement and planning. So it looks like there's some interesting sessions. We would have to decide if we all wanted to go, or some of us wanted to go, what day we wanted to go, and, you know, go up there and attend the sessions. So you'll get back to me, and.
It's in March.
It's in March, yeah. So we've got some time to.
We'll get back to you in February.
No, no, no. The deadline is early March, so we've got time.
Yeah, I'll check it out. By the February meeting, I'll have it in.
We had opened the oral communications for the public, and then we've closed them, so I would have to reopen them again to get your comments. So let me do it, so I can hear your comments. You've got a couple of minutes.
Thank you. And could you please be sure that when you have your meetings, the elevator is working? Because it isn't working when you go into the library. If you go up the stairs there by the library, the doors are locked, so I had to walk down to the elevator for the parking lot, because a friend dropped me anyway. It took me, I was here on time, but.
And your name is?
Marilyn Garrett, and also addressing the issue of cell tower and cell tower radiation. I heard you discussing notifying people beyond 500 feet. For your information, in the county, they do notify people within 1,000 feet, at least at this time, of a proposed cell tower. I would also suggest that if you alter the notification, you also put websites where people can get information on the adverse health impacts of these radiation emitting cell towers. Most, and I want to commend the planning commissioners who did go to the community meeting at Anzoldo School, I think it was on December 3rd, so that you were actually there at the location and could hear the people directly who do not want this danger in their backyard. So just, I like to hold up these signs, because this is just the fact, cell tower radiation causes cancer. Surveys in eight countries all show adverse health effects due to proximity to cell towers that include memory loss, cardiovascular problems, increased cancer incidence, sleep disturbances, neurological problems, and the list goes on. If there were no reports or these kind of complaints, there would be no worry. There are. And also, here's a picture of cell towers disguised as trees. This one is behind the warmth company and Aptos, and you can notice that the trees do not look so healthy here. These artificial, and they're military frequencies, are biologically damaging. And if you notice by cell towers everywhere, I think you'll observe that. I want to give you an article from South Africa that shows trees that look blackened and deadened after the 4G technology went in. And it quotes a woman who had healthy-looking pine and eucalyptus trees on her property, about 50 of them, and now they don't look so good, as well as people complaining about impacts, sending them to the hospital. And here's some of them. "The trees aren't indicated of what to come," she believes. "We're receiving more reports of headaches, blurry vision, tinnitus, and nausea, and problems with breathing and hair loss in the area. Children are experiencing severe shooting pains in their muscles and joints." Part of the problem here, the context, is that the corporations are ruling and dictating to governments of what they should do for the profit of these corporations. And you are entrusted with the well-being and what is promoting the quality of life and the character of the neighborhood for the people of Watsonville, not the corporations. So I would urge you to do everything you can to say, no, we're not going to go along with harming our own citizens. And the man, the young man who spoke with the pacemaker here. And the man, the young man who spoke with the pacemaker here last time, definitely these frequencies interfere with pacemaker function. And I gave you the copy of Take Back Your Power, investigating the smart grid, and it's about the health impacts and the kind of assault on our rights. Did any, and I have more...
Thank you very much. I think you've gone over your time, so...
Okay, did anyone get to see it, is what I'd like to know.
I think so.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to close the oral communications again for the general public and from members of the planning commission, and move on to 4.0, consent agenda. The minutes for the December 3rd, 2013 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Commissioner Sardiento, seconded by Commissioner Corley. Any discussions, modifications? Clerk Aurelio?
I'll have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Okay. Any changes, additions, deletions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Aurelio abstains? Motion carried. The consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to public hearings, 5.0. We first have 5.1, "A public hearing to consider an application for a variance and environmental review to allow the installation of a 499-gallon retail propane tank at an existing gas station that has a residential zoning designation at One Green Valley Road", filed by Amerigas, Amerigas Propane, the applicants. Again, first staff presentation, then the applicant, if he or she is here, presentation, public hearing, commission discussion, and recommendation.
Thank you, Chair Castillo. I'm Keith Boyle, Community Development Department. Susie is playing Vanna White today. She'll be going through my presentation as I speak. This is an application from Lazaro Oliveris, the owner of Ease Ranch Milk. Thank you, next. Procedure is this. The site is zoned, single-family. There has been a gas station. It's a slow location for many years. It was annexed to the city in 2000. The city has a general plan designation of commercial in this site, but any expansion of it basically needs to get a variance, and that's what we're talking about tonight. We've taken a while to make sure that this application is consistent with a variety of issues that are out there. There's an airport safety zone, Zone 3 and Zone 4, that go over this property. We had to make sure that it was located in Zone 4 to be consistent with the compatibility issues in the zoning for the airport. Additionally, the size of the tank was established at 499 because it had to be within five feet of adjacent property in order to get adequate circulation around the tank. Go to the next slide. This is the site. As you can see, it's, you want to show them, Susie? There's a parking lot, and this is the gas station, the actual, next slide. The actual tank is going to go at the corner of where the pump station is. And this shows the Zone 3 compatibility area, that this tank must stay outside in order to be consistent with the airport safety compatibility areas. It's going to be a vertical-mounted tank in order to provide adequate room to circulate around it, which is shown with the arrows. And Mr. Oliveris will have to take out his little temporary things right now to make sure this goes in, but I'm sure he's aware of that. So, anyway, with those changes, next slide, please. This is the vertical mounting, and again, the size of the tank was critical because of the setback issue in order to allow circulation. So, vertical mounting, 499 is the maximum allowable by fire code. Next slide. With that, staff's recommending that the planning commission approve the variance to install 499-gallon tank, subject to the findings and conditions in your staff report. Concludes my presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Keith. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have one. How many tanks does Amerigas have around the city of Watsonville?
Don't know if they're here or not. I don't know that information. How many specific ones? That's kind of their business model. But they have a number of them.
Well, I guess the other thing, the problem I have is the height and the visual thing of this tank. We're always trying to improve the look of the city of Watsonville. And Green Valley is a very well-traveled piece of road there.
Sure.
Seeing this tank vertically would be kind of like seeing that awful cell tower in a park. And then sitting right next to a house, I don't think it'd be very comfortable. So, and that's the reason, I'm asking, and the reason I was asking you, how many of these tanks does this company have around the town?
Sure, I mean, this is a much smaller tank than what they normally install. They normally install like a 2,500-gallon tank.
Horizontally.
Horizontally.
Yeah, so visually, you wouldn't, you wouldn't see, you don't tend to see a horizontal tank that size.
Sure, sure.
Right now, we're looking vertically.
Right. In this case, though, the horizontal mounting would make it very difficult to circulate in that driveway. So it's a very confined space. If you go back, Susie, to the...
If it would go horizontally, it wouldn't fit in the variance.
Yeah, I mean, well, if it goes horizontally, you interfere with the circulation of the driveway. I mean, that was, it's that tight, so that was a problem. Go to the next slide. So this is a 10-foot, it's a 10-foot tank. It's fair, there are tanks that are already on that site to meet the California standards for gas emissions that are very similar to this. Lorenzo might, I'm not sure if I have the picture of that, but there are some other tanks that are right next to the building that look like this. Unfortunately, because of the Zone 3, it had to get located here. Go back to the last, the previous slide. So this is, the white area is all his property. The only place that he can put it is in this gray area, so there are not a lot of good potential options for it. So has to be, he could potentially locate it out in this corner, and that's something that Mr. Oliveris would have to talk to you about, but, anyway.
Other questions?
Would this even come to us if this was a commercial zoning?
No.
It wouldn't be.
The only, the only thing, if it was in Zone 3, it couldn't be in Zone 3, so, but because this has the residential zoning, it had to come to you.
So if it was commercial, it would meet all the requirements?
Would meet the standards.
Therefore, it wouldn't come to us?
No.
Got you. And this is right up against the street, then, right?
Well, it's about 30 feet away from the street, 40 feet. I mean, this is the street here, and this is the, the pump island is going to block some of the view of it. This is a house, but it's owned by a dentist, which when the zoning goes, it used to be Calderon's Tires, so it's been a commercial site for quite a long time. The current owner intends it to be commercial in the future when the zone actually changes, when the general plan is approved.
But there are residents right next door right now, then?
There are residents in the house back here. This is, this is residence, there is, I'm not sure if there's residents in this right now. There are, okay.
Other questions for staff? Doby?
Yes, many of them.
Jenny?
And I apologize if I'm asking, you know, a question that I probably should know better, but is this something that we would get input from the community that is being impacted on immediately as, you know, the residents that will be right next door to it?
There is a public hearing as part of this. It's, people that are adjacent, within 300 feet, have been notified, so you'll hear from the public when that part comes to the hearing.
Other questions for staff?
Can I just ask one more question? What are the potential hazards to that community, to that neighborhood?
Is the propane tank guy here? Lazaro? Okay. Propane is not my business, so, you know, I mean, I, this is a much smaller tank than what has normally been, you know, if they put a normal-sized tank there, they would have a minimum 10-foot setback requirement. So because of this location, they weren't able to do that, but to meet fire code requirements, the smaller tank was required. So this is a much smaller tank than would normally be installed. I mean, again, you're looking at 2,500 to 5,000-gallon tanks are what you're normally looking at. This is a, less than a 500-gallon tank, so, you know, but I'm not a qualified propane specialist to tell you what the safety requirements are. I can tell you that it meets the fire code requirements for separation from property lines. So it's consistent with code requirements.
Other questions for staff? Thank you, Keith. Is the applicant here? Mr. Oliveris, or, would you like to come up and say something, answer questions, make a presentation?
Good evening, council members. My name is Lazaro Oliveris. Thank you for taking the time. Just a little recap. That property there was abandoned for three years. No money would risk opening up that property. It's a great location. It takes, it's really easy to open the doors, but to keep them open is a different story. We currently employ several employees there that, there's not a day that doesn't go by that somebody comes by saying, "Do you have any hours for me? Do you have any work? I'll do anything." It's unfortunate that I can't allow any more employees to join our team. It hurts, it hurts me, to be honest with you. If you were in my shoes, seeing this thing going day in and day out, I think maybe you might be a little more understanding. The fact is, in order to keep the doors open, as a convenience store, people, customers are coming in asking for certain items, and it's my job to give them what they want. One of the things that brought, came up, why we wanted to bring it in, because a lot of the customers go to Monterey County, over the bridge to Pahau to get their propane. So there's tax revenue that's being lost, I feel, when it could stay here in Santa Cruz County. I urge you to consider this. It's a family-run business. I've been in this type of business for like 40 years. I worked for Long's Drugs for 23 of those years in different cities. So I'm pretty much familiarized with customers' needs, customer service, and trying to supply what the customers want, and that's all we're trying to do. It's important that you guys be open to ways of trying to generate income, especially in the situations we're in, where there isn't a lot of money coming into the city, not to mention the county, so I would appreciate you guys' help on this. Again, it's a family-run business. We're just trying to keep the doors open, and we could definitely use your support. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Oliveris?
I have one question. Now, is there any required training to be done?
Yes, there is. Yeah, they...
What type of training is that?
Amerigas comes over to your location and trains employees that are going to be doing this, on how to connect the tank properly, what kind of tank you're supposed to be able to dispense fuel to. There's tanks that are already outdated that you're not supposed to refuel them anymore. Typically, it's a tank, when a customer comes in with their tank, it's kind of like a, the knob is the shape of a triangle. If there's any round knobs that open and close the tank, then those aren't allowed anymore. It's state law, I guess.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Other questions?
I think it's a follow-up to the question that I had, that I proposed before. What are the safety measures that you will take to ensure that there isn't a leak or, you know, an accident?
There are daily logs that we keep on the, not just in the propane tank, but we also do that in gasoline pumps that are required by the state. And that's what we're doing a daily, there's a daily log that's kept at the store. The time, it's done daily. The time, the person that did it, and the things that they inspected. Make sure the ballards are in place, there's spray that you use to make sure that there's no leaks in the actual tanks themselves. Making sure there's nothing obstructing someone being, someone that's going to come up, let's say, and trips over something that might be in the way. So it's something that's done daily. There's a log that's kept.
Mr. Oliveris, how will this work? Do I drive into the mini-mart and tell them that I want $100 of propane fuel, and someone will come out and connect it, or, I mean, or do I just go and? I have no idea.
Yeah, here's the thing.
How it works.
Yeah. This particular, this particular type of service is unlike the ones that you can just go up to the store, grab a tank that's already pre-filled, and then walk out. This offers a better value to the consumer. Our normal tank, let's say, you go to a store where it's in a gate, in a box, a wire box, it's like about $21 to $22 if you exchange your tank. The service we're offering is a better value to where it'd be anywhere. Depends on how low your tank is. If your tank's only halfway low, then it could be maybe just $6, $7 to refill your tank. If it's totally empty, it might be $16, $17. So you would go into the store and say, "I need somebody to give me some fuel, you know, some propane." So the employee would walk outside and go to the dispensing station, and then, you know, fill that tank up for you. Once it's filled, then you would go inside and pay whatever amount of gas, propane that was dispensed. So it's a great value, and in these days, we're all looking for value, you know, and that's one of the things that we're trying to offer to our customer. That's just what we do, you know, and we could charge more, but then why pay more when, you know, you can pay less, like they say, and that's what we're trying to do.
Any other questions for the applicant? Doby?
I mean, let's say somebody needs some propane for their RV, can, and it has a little propane tank in the RV. Can you fill that by some means?
Yes.
Okay, so there are a variety of propane tanks that you can fill at this station.
Yes.
Have you, in the past, owned a gasoline station or one of these propane stations?
No.
Thank you.
Other... Marty?
I got a couple more. My first question is, are you going to buy this tank, or are you leasing it?
It'd be a lease.
My next question, are you going to be selling empty propane tanks at your property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? See none, thank you very much, Mr. Oliveris.
Thank you for your time.
This is a public hearing on this item, so if you want to address this item, anyone from the public wants to address, just come up to the microphone, state your name, and...
Hi, my name's Jonathan Brown. I live at 201 Cary Avenue, right on the other side of the street from the house that's right next to where this is going to go on. I've got a few concerns with it. One is the amount of kids that walk by on the street every day, going to and from school. And it's a crazy amount of kids that walk by at all times of the day, all day long. The second thing is, there's a bus stop located right in front of that house there that's active for the Green Valley Bus System. And I think that that's something that, I don't know, needs to be considered when looking at approving this variance.
The bus stop is on Green Valley Road?
It's on Green Valley Road. You can see it in the corner of the slide. It's off to the side. You can't make out it's a bus entirely, but you can see it's there. That's where the bus stop is at.
Okay.
And there's a bus there quite a bit. You know, we ride the bus all the time, and you can catch it there, you know, not every 15 minutes, but it's something that you can ride often. The next thing that I was looking at was the proximity to the slough and the fact that Green Valley runs downhill right into the slough from that point. And right across the street from Cary, at the property that we're in, the hill starts to get significantly steep. And so you're talking about downhill right into the slough fairly easily from an accident spill there. And so I think that's something that needs to be considered, just because our wetlands are so valuable to us. commerce and tourism, just things that need to be considered. The last thing that, I have two more things. The next thing that, that I was thinking about was the fact that they already sell propane in propane tanks, and so, it's a service that they already provide, and we love the ranch market. We shop there all the time. We love everything about it, and we understand, like, it's a family market, and we don't have anything against them. It, it's just that this part of it, and so, I, I think that that's something that needs to be considered, that the propane service is already offered, even though it might not be offered at as low a price as you could possibly knock it down to. But if you installed a bigger tank, you could knock it down to a cheaper price. And so, you know, it's kind of pro-cons. The last thing that I looked at was its proximity to the gas pumps, and normally, when you see propane tanks installed, they're a significant distance from the gas pumps, and just logically, you know, you don't need to be a planner to say that you want those two gases as far apart as you could put them on a property. That's not very far apart, and with houses and families on all sides, big families on all sides, we're a neighborhood of a bunch of people right there, and a bunch of people would be impacted by this. And because of those five points, I just ask that you look at them and consider and know that, that impact, it impacts me and my parents directly, and, and we're opposed to it, even though we love the ranch market, and we really enjoy their business, and it, and it does help us out. But because of that, it, it's just something that I'm against. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on this item. Anyone else wants to come and speak on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it up to the commission for discussion.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Is there a distance requirement from propane tank to gas?
It's twenty-five feet, which, there's a thirty-four-foot separation here. That, that was one of the other separations that we were looking at, and you can see on this document, basically identifies where the pumps are and what the setback is.
Any other comments?
I guess just one, Keith, is that it's pretty typical for us, like, for instance, this is going to become commercial, which is why it's here now on this variance, but it is very close to a lot of residential properties behind it and so on. Is this typical? I mean, when I'm looking at these gas stations, I'm trying to think of where these propane tanks are. I think there's one over there at the corner over there on Green Valley and Freedom Boulevard. It doesn't seem like there are very many houses around it. This one bothers me a little bit, just in the fact that this will become commercial, but it is residential right now, and the proximity to that bothers me a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there, there's one currently at Ron Ence's project, but it is, it's in all intents and persons, although it's his own residential, it's commercial because of its frontage along the Green Valley, et cetera. You know, I, there has never been an accident of the stuff that's currently there, so, you know, and I, you know, you can't guarantee there won't be one, but, you know, it, it's a pretty safe system, and this is a much smaller tank than anything else that's out there. This is like the smallest kind of tank that you can get. So, in regards to level of safety, as long as the people are properly trained, you know, it's not a self-fill thing. The employees will get training from the AmeriGas people, and they will fill properly. I think you would avoid the safety issues, and it's, it's, again, it's a pretty small tank compared to what's out there.
So, so we're saying, since it's a small tank, and hopefully he's going to be successful in his business, he's going to be refueling this tank?
He's going to have to refill it fairly, fairly frequently.
Fairly frequently, yeah. So, then we're going to have a bigger vehicle?
A propane, a propane vehicle will be there to fill the tank. That would be the standard process of round propane vehicles. I think they've got like twenty-five hundred gallons in those trucks. Yes.
So, I just wanted to comment on two things. One is, I filled up my propane tank, not in this county. And I hadn't tried to do it here, but I'm surprised there aren't more. I wondered if Home Depot had one, I guess.
They have just the filled tanks. They don't have a propane tank that you fill. They have the pre-filled tanks.
So, that was, then that's what my second comment was going to be. I recently helped a friend who bought a property move in. She had to clean out the property. We found twenty to thirty of these empty tanks in the yard, you know, it was kind of like a landfill. So, I imagine people who want to ref, who want to, who need propane sometimes don't take the one, empty one back, which reminds me of, of, you know, just how, how much of a pollutant that can be. But I, I've not, in the couple of places that I have filled my propane tank, I have not seen it in a, in a residential, or as close to a residential area as this is, which bugs me a little bit. You know, everything else seems to be in place, but also, it's a good fit, I think, with the overall, you know, the services that are offered there. That's all.
Other comments?
I have a question. I think it's been asked already. Is the reason that it's coming to the planning commission because the property is zone residential?
It's because it's zone residential.
If it was commercial?
If it was commercial, it wouldn't come to you.
Wouldn't come to us.
No.
I just wanted to hear that again.
I'm going to go ahead and move to-
Okay, is there, we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the installation of a four-hundred-and-ninety-nine gallon retail propane tank in existing gas station that has a residential zoning designation at one Green Valley Road.
It's been moved by Commissioner Dana, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. Any discussion, questions, comments? Can we have a roll call?
Corley?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Gomez Conteras?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Sarmiento?
Yes.
Castillo?
Yes. Staff recommendation has been accepted. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five point two. A public hearing to consider an application for special use permit and environmental review to allow the establishment of an auto repair and diagnostics business at four-six-nine Union Street, filed by Mr. Fabio Navarro, the applicant. Again, first we'll have staff presentation. Keith?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission and the community. This is an application to basically take over an existing auto repair use at four-sixty-nine Union Street. Next, please. The site is zone, community, commercial core area, it's downtown. There's a fifty-seven-hundred-square-foot building that has been used for auto, minor auto repair, brake jobs, diagnostics, smog checks. That's what Mr. Navarro is proposing to do here. No major, major engine replacement or bodywork, any of that. Applicant is proposing to do the same use, same hours that was previously there. Next, please. This is the location. Again, it's off of Union Street and West Lake. There's a U-drive that goes through, parking along the edges of the site and inside the building. Next. This was the notice, this is the location, driveway basically has cars outside. Next, please. For parking of this, they need a minimum for the fifty-seven-hundred-square-foot building, they need a minimum of nine parking spaces, which the site currently has. Next. And adequate parking is provided on the site, and staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the application subject to findings and conditions.
Thank you, Keith. Any questions for staff?
I do have a question. On one of the slides, I, I thought I saw it said, "And sales." Are they going to be selling cars there too?
No, no. If that, if that, no, that's a mistake. That was from a previous, sorry. They're not selling cars here.
Just fixing them.
They're just fixing them. Same as the other use, that just came from a previous application. My bad.
Any other questions for staff?
Is there currently a tire business there?
No, no, it's just diagnostics. The applicant is here, he can explain, but mi, minor auto repair, there isn't tire replacement.
Jenny?
Didn't they have two auto repair shops pretty much in the same location, or?
I think it was just one.
It was just one?
Yeah.
There's a out-of-body.
Yeah, that's on the other side. It's a different, that, that's a different business, that's not in this location. I, I thought you were talking about this particular site. Across the alley, there is an auto body shop.
Okay, I think I'm confusing them.
And this is auto repair?
This is auto repair. Mi, minor auto repair, diagnostics, et cetera.
Other questions for staff? Thank you. Is Mr. Navarro here, or representative? Do you want to come up and tell us what you want to do, or what you want to do, and?
Hi, good night. I, when I use the, try later, but I would try to do my best in English. I want to open the auto repair business right in the downtown, like you say, the mini-repair. I want to do something different, the, the shop, the, any, one shop, and anyone can come in and look the shop and the cameras or something. So, it's basically just that, mining's, mini-repair, and shake smogs, smog checks, I mean, and it's just that.
Questions for Mr. Navarro? Marty?
Have you ever owned a business before?
I run the shop for three years, and I help a lot, well, across the bridge, and I help a lot of the people, but it's my first time.
In Watsonville?
In Watsonville, to, to own the business.
But you have experience, and you've owned another shop?
Yeah, to manage the, the business, and to do the-
Toby?
Clarification, is there a, a, a public right-of-way that goes into this and then curves and goes?
No, it's, it's a private. The, the lot is private.
I see.
So, you go back to the aerial.
I'm, I'm just trying to, I thought there was a little sort of a street.
So, this is, this is the, it, this, this is all private property. This is one parcel. This is the, the road that goes through here, but it's a public-
I see, well. I've got something else in mind.
So, yeah, the, the public streets are along the edges of it, but everything else is, is private. I mean, this is all on private property.
Other questions for Mr. Navarro? Thank you, gracias. This is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it up. Anyone from the general public wants to come and speak on this item?
Hi, everyone. My name is Carlos Cacogi. I lived here in town for a year now, and I'm a contractor. I own trucks that always need maintenance, obviously, oil change and whatnot. So, for me, it's very convenient to have a shop right really close to my place, so I can just drop them off and walk to my house and get and pick them up later on. So, I think it's very, very, a good idea to reopen the business. Obviously, it's gonna, it's gonna be very good for the city, tax-wise, and that's pretty much it. Hopefully, you guys can take this in a good consideration and move forward with this.
How many, how many trucks do you have?
I have six.
And you're going to give them all your business?
Absolutely, yes. Yes.
Okay.
Probably owns quite a business.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to come and speak on this item?
Well, again, good evening. This is Jose Umberto Camacho, and just is my pleasure to know Fabio, because I work for the Watsonville Updose Adult Education. I was the ESL student advisor, maybe like close to ten years ago. I worked for five years over there, and just he was one of my students, you know, because I just advised which classes they need to continue in order to progress, you know, towards learning English. Also, I'm a, you know, a second English language learner, so I, I would like to congratulate him because it's the, it's the goal, it's the idea, you know, to, you come to the United States, you have your dreams, you, you go to school, even though he's a married man, you know, you go your evenings, and then you start your own business. So, I think, I would like to say, "Good job, love you." Fabio, sorry.
Was he a good student?
Always, and also, well, he gave me his, you know, business car, so I said, "Okay, remember, I was your advisor, okay?" So, you can get one, he's a good guy.
But you're going to take your car there? And maybe you'll get a little discount. Anyone else wants to speak on this item?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Agustín Rocha. I've been, I, I have the pleasure to know Fabio for about five years now, and he's a great, great person, one of the best mechanics in town, I can, I can tell you that. I have been there when other mechanics call him to, to get advice. So, I think he, he really deserves to, to have his, his own shop and not make money for somebody else, because he's, he's just a great person.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so anyone else wants to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it up to the planning commission for discussion and/or recommendation. Recommendation? Aurelio?
Yeah, I recommend it.
I hear a motion?
We, we make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve staff recommendation, is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner, Toby Jenkins, second. Any discussion?
Can I have a comment? Actually, I think, I wish him the best. This is actually really something really good for downtown. You kind of think about it, you can take your automobile, your car downtown, have it serviced, and hopefully go shopping around the local shops there.
Or go have lunch.
Or at least have a sandwich at Jack's, or buy a cigar. Either one of the two, however it fits you. But, you know, I wish him the best, and just keep at it.
Other, other comments? Can we have a roll call, please?
Corley?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Gomez Conteras?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Sarmiento?
Yes.
Castillo?
Yes. Motion carried. Congratulations, Mr. Navarro. One final question.
Excuse me, Gonzalez, yes.
He made the motion.
Are you just going to work on American cars, or you're going to do foreign cars, or? Everything?
Guy that runs in, rolls in.
Okay. He'll take care of it, it's a car.
Pushed in.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item five point three. A public hearing to consider an application for special use permit and environmental review to allow the establishment of an auto repossession and storage business at one-thirty Lee Road, filed by Simone Balkenhold for Roadrunner Auto Recovery. Again, we'll hear the staff presentation. Keith?
Thank you, Chair. Next slide. The site is zoned industrial, IG. This district allows auto uses with a use permit. This location was previously used as an auto repair. It's a twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot building of about two, two total sixteen thousand square feet in the area. This building has fire sprinklers, which is required for storage of automobiles. Next, please. This is the site. It's, like, the first picture was the, the actual location. Can you, it's the front, there you go, that, that, right there, at the front. That's the, this area that's being proposed to be used. Next slide. Watsonville Municipal Code requires five parking spaces for the first three thousand square feet of an auto business use, and one for eight hundred, each additional eight hundred square feet. Since there's twenty-seven-hundred square feet here, a total of five spaces is required. Project is consistent with the municipal code regulations. Next. There are no designated hours for this operation. It needs to be consistent with state regulations for repossession of automobiles, which she has a state license for. They need to act on an as-needed basis as the companies require their services. So, it's located in an industrial area, not near residential, should not have an impact on any residential as part of their business. A part of the conditions is they follow the state regulations for repossession, and that any vehicles that are taken for lean purposes be stored inside before they are removed from the premise. With that, staff is recommending- With that, staff is recommending approval based on the findings and conditions in your staff report. Concludes my presentation.
Any questions for staff? Doby?
Keith, as I recall, a lot of this building and area is devoted to a diesel repair.
There are several repair shops.
In that.
In this area, yes.
And I know that the, I, I've had the pleasure of going here two times with the chambers visit, visiting the businesses. And the previous folks who were there had a series of parking issues and space issues with the diesel operation, which has a lot of trucks going and taking. Are these folks aware of some of the?
Well, the part of their lease agreement is that they have five dedicated spaces plus the interior for storage of automobiles, so the applicant is here, she can explain to you what she thinks her requirements will be, but I think it's sufficient for her operation.
By the nature of that operation?
Yeah, it's not, it's not as busy as a, as a truck repair operation. You know, this is going out and taking people's cars who have not paid their liens, basically.
Other questions for staff? The applicant is here? Simone, and excuse me for mispronouncing your last name.
Everybody does it. Thank you for your time here this evening.
Could you tell us your name?
Simone Balken Hall. And I'd like to thank the, the commissioners for taking the time to review my application. And any questions you might have, I would love to try and answer them.
Questions for the applicant? Doby?
I take it that cars will come in and perhaps be in the interior of your?
Correct.
Until they're processed and?
Correct.
Sent back to banks or whatever?
Or to auction.
And you're aware of the, of the diesel operations and?
Absolutely.
How busy those are?
Correct.
Thank you.
We do not intend on storing any vehicles outside of?
I see.
Of the secured area as designated.
Jenny?
What is the volume that you anticipate? I'm not familiar with the volume of the business.
Well, since it's a new business, that, I'm hoping the sky's the limit. However, my particular-
That depends on somebody's perspective, right?
I guess you're right. I expect approximately 20 to 25 vehicles can fit in that warehouse before I would outgrow it. I don't expect to store vehicles outside of the warehouse. That's not my business plan.
Doby?
Have you been in this business before?
I have not. This is a new business for myself. My partner and I, we have the necessary business or the professional licenses from the BSIS, the bureau that oversees this industry from the state of California.
Mireia?
A repossession agency license.
I just know of one other place where repossessed cars go currently. That's on, on Main Street, I believe, if I'm correct. Where?
My understanding is that, oh, we would actually be the only repossession agency in the county. There is another warehouse and yard in Salinas, which is where all the cars that are repossessed are being brought either to Salinas or San Jose.
Wow.
So this is a brand-new business.
And basically, we're talking about a storage. You're not gonna repair or?
No repair.
Paint the cars or just?
Storage of vehicles and personal property, along with the, the 70, approximately 70 square foot small office that I will be in.
And will it be repossession just in Santa Cruz County, or Monterey, San Benito, Santa Clara?
Correct. We're licensed to do business in the state of California.
Okay.
So some of these cars might be from Monterey, or San Benito, or Santa Clara.
Other questions? Dana, Rick?
I, I guess you're the reposessor. You're not, you're not a storage place. You're actually the?
Correct.
You're the reposessor?
Correct.
Okay. So are you the person, or you have a, a crew then that goes out and actually repossesses the vehicle, and then brings it back to this location? And how, how long do they stay at this location typically before either the bank or an auction takes them away from you?
Well, there are, there are a couple of different ways that the vehicle would leave our possession. One would be if the debtor makes good on the lien instrument and pays the bank, and then comes and redeems the car, then we can release it. Other options would be to go to auction, and that's something that the bank decides.
Would these folks be going to your location out there on Lee Road then?
Correct.
To get their car?
If, if they, if they settle up with the bank and pay, pay what they need to according to the bank's records, then they will have the opportunity to come to our location and redeem the vehicles and/or their personal property.
Other, Mireia?
Follow-up question?
I don't know if you finished talking about what all the ways are that cars then go somewhere else from your place.
So we could, with the tow truck, bring them directly to auction, therefore bypassing any auto storage. The other option is, we bring it back, and the bank may arrange, at their discretion, to have a transporter arrive and bring multiple cars to auction. Or the other option would be that the debtor arranges with the bank for a redemption, in which case they would come and redeem the car in person.
Doby?
Is there any chance you'll get into the auto auction business?
I don't see that for myself, but it's intriguing.
Other questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
Aurelio?
This might seem, I hope it goes good for you, first of all, in your endeavor. What's the security risk on something like this? I mean, that's what I see first. I mean, it's, I mean, and I, I'm looking at this as, as the services that our, our police force has to deal with already. And if there's gonna be more issues in your site that they have to come and deal with, is this gonna cause a burden for our police force at all?
Well, I am certainly, first and foremost, interested in everybody's safety, including my own. And to that, not only do we have a sprinkler system, but also the mandors, just in case there's a fire. That's always safe. And as far as issues with the public, well, we intend on running our business with the public safety first and foremost in mind, according to the laws of the state of California. I do believe that we will, we have a good location that's been identified with that, and as far as other risks, I think that's something that any business owner, whether they be a repair shop, or a gas station, or mini mart, or check cashing location, we all have to worry about that.
Yeah, but as I see it, I, I think your risk is a little higher, because you have the folks that are in debt, that are in debt, but are in need of their vehicle. And some folks will go to extremes to try to get back their vehicle. And I'm, I'm, I'm looking out for your safety most of all. But again, I'm looking at, how many times is our police force gonna be called out because you have some upset person at your location?
Well, I think that by the time-
This is something that's important for a city.
By the time they arrive at our location, they've already gone through their lender's requirements. In other words, they've already gone to the bank, they've made good with the bank, they've, we've got their identification already. They must provide those items before they even get a release to come down to discuss the possibility of redeeming their vehicle or their personal property. So I think that, I think that we're pretty safe.
I got two questions.
Marty?
First of all, are you putting security cameras on?
Yes.
My next question is actually to the Watsonville Police Department. And I see him back in the back corner there.
World's leading authority here.
I, I did see that the Watsonville Police Department didn't comment on this. And what is their take of having a repossession storage facility in the city of Watsonville? And is that gonna cause any hardship?
This afternoon was the first time that we had seen it. At this time, we don't expect it to cause us any, any real hardship. We have several tow agencies, which are within the city limits, that we deal with on a regular basis. And I'm thinking back to the calls for service that we get at the, at those types of places, which is very similar. We're dealing with towed vehicles. And with the business that she is planning, they do have that other, that extra layer between them and the owner of the vehicle with the, with the bank. So they have to go through the bank to even, I think, learn of their location. So they, so when the vehicle is reposessed, the owner of the vehicle doesn't even know where the vehicle is taken to. And so that, the, the owner has to go to the, to the bank, or to whoever the lender was, to figure out who has their vehicle, and then they're, then they're having to make some sort of settlement. The issue that I see is, if they're not actually trying to get their car out, but if they have personal possessions inside the vehicle, inside the trunk, that the reposessor wasn't aware of when they took the vehicle, that's when we may be getting called out for some sort of disturbance. But I don't see it as being, as, as a real huge impact on calls for service for us. The couple of questions that I did have, that I was thinking about, was the hours of operation?
Office hours, or?
Office hours.
Office hours. I plan to be there during the hours of eight to four. However, the debtors will be calling the banks to make the arrangements, and then by that, I'll probably get notice for my, my physical presence being there, if that makes sense. Sometimes I might go for lunch.
Do you, do you have a requirement, do you have a requirement? After hours, or?
We don't, we do not have a requirement to show up after hours. However, we do have the discretion and ability, if the debtor requests, to come and release their vehicle after hours, perhaps like dinnertime. If somebody wants that, then we can talk about that. But that, again, would be arranged through the bank. They would let us know if that's something that their debtor wants. Uh, yes. It's already alarmed. I plan on installing some cameras in the next week.
A follow-up question on the alarm system. Are you planning on putting panic buttons in?
Uh, that's a good question. I, I really don't know what, what the alarm company offers, but most likely.
I, I think I watch too much TV, the repossession.
I think so.
See stuff flying through the windows.
That's where we get all our impressions of reposessed cars.
That's, no, no reality shows in the city of Watsonville. Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Jenny?
I, I'm a little curious to find out what motivated you to go into this type of business?
How'd you get into this?
Well, I, my business partner and I, we've known each other for about 15 years now, and he is, he has been a reposessor for, I'm going to say since 2007, so he has some experience. And I've always wanted a business with a big truck. And I also wanted a business in which I could work at the run desk, and specifically, something that would never be outsourced to China, or India, or even San Jose. I want to stay in the county of Santa Cruz. That's where I love being.
Other questions for the applicant? Doby?
Simone, you are aware that Marty's office is just down the street from you.
Please be on time. With your payments.
We're all paid for.
Ah, then you have nothing to worry for me.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it for the public. Anyone wishes to comment on this item? Mr. Orozco?
I've already identified myself. Patrick Orozco, Pahravali Alone Indian Council. And I'm happy to know who's the owner. I got the property right across from you. And the previous owners were, I think they made candles, and they complained about spirits. Because we have the cemetery right across from you. And some of those buildings are over the site. And I ask, I'm not opposed to your, to your permit, you know, as long as there's no digging, because the chances of isolated burials are still there, okay? And I'm glad you're putting those cameras in. Maybe I can find out who's been cutting our cyclone fence. I don't know what they want in our property. Probably pot diggers, you know, artifact diggers. And they've been cutting our fence time and time again. The other day, we had a, my son called me. They caught two guys with these, what do you call, AV, little buggies on our property, because somebody knocked out our fence, you know. So I had to go down there and rebuild the fence, and I went down and spoke to the people. Says, hey, we don't want you in that, on the property. We have signs, there's no trespassing. And, you know, that property belongs to Aaron Berman, right? Yeah, Aaron Berman. And we own the property, it's about seven and a half acres there, you know. And I'm not opposed to your, to your permit, as long as you don't do any groundbreaking. And I, I'm happy you put those cameras in. You can catch who's been breaking those fences. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orozco. Anyone else wants from the public wants to address this item? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it up for commission, discussion, and our motion. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept it, that we approve the request.
Been moved by Jenny to approve staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Corley. Any discussions, comments? Roll call, please.
Corley?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Gomez Concheras?
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Sarmiento?
Yes.
Castillo?
Yes. Motion approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Hope your business does well. Item 6.0, we have the acting secretary, Mr. Boyle. Any comments, or?
No, I think we're gonna be looking forward to a busy year, though. You're gonna have the Climate Action Plan. Marty is well aware of it. He's on our TAC, and we actually have an administrative draft, so that's coming up in the next couple of months, probably. We have several projects that will be moving forward, hopefully a hotel, couple other kind of big, big projects moving forward. So you're gonna have an exciting few months.
I have a request of the acting secretary to pass on to the secretary.
Sure.
One, could we put on the February agenda the election of chair and vice chair?
Sure, we'd be happy to do that. Is everybody gonna be here?
February 4th?
February 4th?
We're all gonna be here, right?
Everybody gonna be here?
We just do that, though?
No, 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 no. We do it every year.
We did it, we did it like, yeah, three months late last time.
That's why I want to do it early, in February. So that's one thing. Secondly, could we get from, from staff, not something that's ongoing, but some kind of report of, you know, you mentioned a possible hotel, you know, things that might be coming up that either have been approved or not approved, or not something that you're negotiating with that are?
Right.
Hush, hush.
Right.
But things that are happening that, you know, just information for us to know what's going on on Main Street next to?
Yeah, well, we generally give you all the pre-apps that come in, so you're informed. And those are like the preliminary projects that are starting to look at becoming a real application. They might not become a real application, but, you know, I mean, those are the ones that you should pay attention to. But we'd be happy to give you kind of an update.
Just like what's going, or going, or what's coming down the road, or what you see- Just like what's going, going, or what's coming down the road, or what you see happening in the next six to 12 months.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think things are, things are getting busier again, which is a good sign.
Great. And then thirdly, the cell towers. The French Park, it looks like that's been postponed, or continued, or whatever. The one on Freedom?
Yeah, it's probably coming to you in February.
In February, the one on Freedom, they had the, the, the meeting, the workshop, whatever, whatever it was.
Community meeting in February, on the 15th, yeah.
And you were there, and?
I was there.
Did residents show up?
Um, there's probably about 20 people, I think, been there.
Okay. So that might be coming up.
That'll probably be coming to your February meeting.
More so than the other, the?
The other one, I, you know, is indeterminate at this stage.
Okay. Any other questions for the Acting Secretary?
I do have one.
Yeah.
Request?
The Manavial. Is that moving forward?
Yeah, actually, we're working on some kind of exciting things out there. We just need to get some buy-in from the property owners. But we have, we have a grant application that we can match about half the cost of the infrastructure. We found out it costs about $12.6 million. And EDA can actually give about $6 million as part of that. And we're working on, it's called EB5. They have the ability to provide upfront money. It's a visa program through Chinese. And then, then we can bond, after infrastructure is built, we can bond back. So, I mean, we can actually, are moving forward to getting all the infrastructure completed within three years. If all of this stuff moves forward, and once we have that, we think that people will?
We get buildings start being built.
Buildings will start happening. So, anyway, so we're, we're really hoping, we just, we have to get the property owners to buy into this, the grant and the EB5 funding. There's some, you know, risk involved with it if they don't get any tenants. But they'll have at least three years to get that, you know, going with it, under, you know, they'll, they'll have actual developed infrastructure. So, anyway, so that's what we're working on diligently behind the scenes, you know, and we're, we're hoping, crossing our fingers, that we get everybody on board, because it, it will really fast-track it.
Any other questions for the?
How about the, one question, one quick question. The Trail Rail, the rail trail?
The rail trail?
Yeah, the Trail Rail.
Yeah. We got our grant funding for our component that's within city limits. So that'll be moving forward with the Public Works Department to implement, you know, I think they got like $750,000 to do the section that's identified in, in the city limits for that. So the Public Works is excited to move forward with that.
These are the kind of information that I think could be, should be shared with the Planning Commission. So, anything else? Next meeting, February 4th, 4:30. But if there's not too much business, it's 6 o'clock. I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.